Alright, so we'll call the new orders six thirty. So the question is.
What brings to the way of the United States of America? To the Republic for which it stands, a nation without the invisible liberty and justice for all.
As you can all tell, I'm playing lead by night, so I don't know if you guys have got it. I'm a horrible dude too. Is that? Well, anyhow, it's alright, so start here, uh, in the question three minutes, does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Do a little air change on. Fourteen people? Anybody using the agenda around the podium? One table? One table, two minutes. Hey John, you're supposed to be, uh, forty minutes, not second. Last second. Eighty seconds. All the way to favor, that's the right.
Fine.
And then we add to the integration of the financial pillars. The chance to get them on a three-fourteen vote. Make the board a little. Please make more, you play on second.
Second.
Four seconds, three special terms. Are we done with the call?
Yes.
Eighteen, yes, done?
Yes.
Can you answer my call? On the table?
I think it is. Can we table that for a minute?
Table that thing? And we have citizens addressing the commission, who would like to start?
Paul and Chasey are here to, um, address the commission for sure. Are you guys here to address it? I'll, we'll, we'll start with you guys, um, I'll, I'll give you guys a quick rundown. Um, Chasey is a summer employee with the city, um, and she would like to do a, uh, school co-op. And to be, to do three or four hours, um, each day starting at noon after school. Um, and to continue doing, um, quite a bit of the same duties that you do currently. Going on and helping out at the shop, whatever the shop might need. Um, the program's put on through school, she's going to school again tomorrow. Um, we haven't done anything officially like this, much of her time here, but we have had some help today later, maybe over a year.
Cause I talked to Jim, he has seven thousand. So let's talk to you. Yes, just a hard time.
So, we're looking for, uh, fast questions, what regards on that?
Can we, that's a conversation, what is it?
Motion, I can. How, how long is the co-op for, just? Just school year?
You're looking to me, are you right, Chase?
Yep. Do you need a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, Chasey, to the school co-op.
We have a motion, you can work for, uh, three or four hours a day?
Three hours each day.
Three more a day?
Yep.
For the school year? And what should we have a second? Eighty seconds, we have forty seconds, we have, um, the discussion. The discussion? The discussion? You're done, John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
The call?
Yes.
My call, yes. I'm just serious. Anything else for the better of the, of the way there? You must not take your job.
No, my job.
He's been in the way.
Good to have you. Doing your hard work. Uh, Dave?
Yeah. I come in peace.
Okay, uh, the reason I'm here is, I've, I've had some concerns and some of the neighbors north of me have had some concerns about all the cattails in the ditch down there, going towards the bus park. And I didn't think we're gonna have two and a half inches of rain this morning to come up and talk about drainage, but, but that's the way it is. So I was just wondering if there's something we can do with that, because that is really blocking water. There's, it is so thick down there that you cannot see the ends of the culverts. And there's actually a tree growing, starting to grow in part of it, which should be taken out of there. And I understand that it's wet and how you get in there to do something now? I don't have a clue other than a, you know, they do make a tractor that has a lawn boom with a mower on it that you can drive along the edge and get in there. And the last person I know that had one around here was Chad Hansen over in Beaufort. If that's something that would interest you. But of course, there is a lot of rocks down in there by that drain that comes off of the hose in there, so you gotta watch out for that. But we're gonna have to do something with that, cause I have never seen, and Mike, you know, you saw, I don't think the, I don't think the water's been that high in our ditch than it was this morning. In three hours, we had two and a half inches of rain. Four inches, well.
It, it was up onto the lawns over there.
And I feel so sorry for those people on Loyal Avenue, because I, I went over there and there was water right up to the crime bureau agent's garage bar on his driveway. So whatever you guys can do to help them, I support whatever you, you know, if you gotta do a swale, or if you gotta put even a twelve, eighteen, or twenty-four inch culvert or something going to the south would relieve a lot of that pressure. But the only problem is, is now, and I don't know if this is any true fact or not, but I heard rumor that this new auction house is gonna send all their water down our way, because the state told them that they couldn't drain into their ditch. So. Well, that's, I can't verify either, but if we get all that water from that, it's down our way. And if we, after two and a half or whatever inches of rain we got today, we're gonna have some issues. But if we get those cattails cleaned out of there, now, I'm not saying to go in there with a trackle and start digging deeper, because the last time NOSs were in there, the water flows, it's just, the c- the cattails are holding the water back.
Some more backwards. But all this water, during this. There's a truck. Yep, so anything that's not said here.
Someone talk to me, I did buy, there's something, there's something that we're gonna have to start pulling that down.
Wow, it's a little tough to.
Well, we thought a big thing would make it solid, like that, cut it two inch. I, um, I don't think it's really an hour, but we were gonna get everything flowing. Unfortunately, we didn't, so, yeah, lacking help, we didn't, uh, we just, it was good diligence.
Well, you're gonna have to, and you know this, I, I don't need to tell you this, but you're gonna have to cut it, but you're gonna have to spray something on it, because that's what, that's what I did in my ditch. I had cattails when we moved in there, we cut it all down and we, and we sprayed, I'm not scared to say I sprayed it wrong enough in the bottom of the ditch, because that's what I did.
They make, they make the water, they make the water when we cut it, that was our plan, we cut it down, get it with that.
But it's just, it's something that's gotta be done, because if we keep getting these, these torrential rains like that, you know.
We're going to run real fast, these folks will be.
Yep, they go all the way.
Yeah.
Very, very, very down, going to the river, there's a bunch of trees that have real big ground on there, so we have to cut down. There's a mountain down there, so it's, it's a domino hall down there, it's all that.
And I, and I also think that the culvert that goes into the orchard, that needs to be lowered, cause that salt end of that is, is too high.
It'd be made too much weight of cattail.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with you one hundred percent.
But even at that, that culvert by the bus park, it's running pretty full.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't go to act too much more with that culvert.
But the culvert that goes under the ground?
Yeah.
That goes all the way to the north, that was only a quarter full this morning. So.
It would be a hell of a project.
Yeah.
They're controlled.
So, but that's my concern and, and I talked to a couple of them down there and they, they just, you know, they spend all the money getting, making their guards and everything look nice, and then, then they have to look out their windows and see cattails and, you know. And then, of course, it doesn't help when we do construction down there too, and all their construction stuff blows down the bottom of the ditch, they don't go and clean it out. So. And that's all I have, I just wanted to, you know, let you know how I feel about it, and if there's something you can do, and something you can help the guys on Loyal, the people on Loyal Avenue, you know, gotta get it done, cause I think we're gonna keep on getting these rains like this, I don't know, I'm not a weatherman, but, you know. Pardon?
You're just as accurate.
I'm just as accurate. Well, I thought we should have sprayed those four.
I'm green six inches tomorrow.
Yeah, I didn't think we're gonna have three, all that rain in three hours.
I suppose their whole mark, I hope they're in the, I was, probably keep one. Probably have it to those rivers, probably, three thousand, a couple. Or it was a river in that one.
But that's where, that swale or whatever you guys are thinking about, or anything, does there move that water to the, to the south? Well, I don't know. Get rain though?
Thank you.
But, uh, I, I was talking to Steve about that gig, and he told me that from the top, he made us verify this, we were walking back to you on, and he said from the top of the curb by the balcony to that ditch, there's a foot and a half dry.
I just looked at it when I come down.
So, so how much do you dare take that down before water from the ditch becomes high to the roof?
Well, it's open plain, so that's what's gonna happen, if you get a lot of water pushed from the west, then it's, it's gonna be.
To me, could you put, could you put some type of a gate valve or something there that you could, it basically is set at a certain height, so that once it gets to that height, the water can't go back.
Even if we can physically hold it.
Right, right.
I'm gonna give us proof of.
And if you want, because you want, I don't know how you wanna look at it, but if you sort of look at it, it sounds like, like this, you're on this rain, well, obviously, it's the middle of the night, and that's watching it, you almost want it closed initially, in case it gets too high and then open it up, I, I don't know, but I just, that was my main, when I was talking to Steve about it, you know, and how, you know. Cause to me, there's no reason why, like a swale, or even, even if we were to put, like, like, like a block, if you put in your, underneath your rain, you know, you put some type of concrete channel through there, and just, you know, put that the height you need it, rather than there, that's gonna be the least disturbing of that area, so.
Well, a flat pavement would be the same, but a flat pavement, so, the only flat, the end of the culvert, just, that would end, it just, it was all open by the water and.
So.
There must have been a foot and a half difference when we looked out the front of the whole.
That's, that's gonna be the tricky part, you need this much rain, how do you get the, how do you get that rain out, how do you get that out of there, cause the ditch is full, you still can't get it out, so fast. I know that, I don't know if you call, call Zach, who's in, talking about what he, you gotta do something. The other thing is, the culvert that comes, comes to the south, comes from Eagle's line. Yep. That was from the culvert. Now, it's like, now, it's gathered, it's, that's what was coming in, now it's like a third. It almost gave any ditch over by the fire department, it's a ditch by the highway, it almost gave me a whine.
Well, there aren't, I think there was much water in, uh, west of, either, there, there really isn't much water in there. Well, I, I think that if you did push a swale or something, it'd take a lot of water, but you haven't really seen water, not much water going west.
I, I don't know if you could ever, do you think there was a lot of water to, to raise that?
Well, that was a fight, I think, for that, like, fifth year, that we're, we're calling this a big battle for that culvert.
Well, I think the first thing would be, obviously, to do something on the culvert, make sure you've got enough water going in the north, and then to, uh.
Well, that would be, that would, that would help hundreds of thousands of castles.
I'm curious, has this Chad Hansen, you know, with that?
He's got the drain tile, I don't know what he over there.
There were four traps.
No, it's just a different one, Chad. Great guy.
He's got the drain tile.
Great guy.
No, I don't.
If we could get a contact, and see what, and his thoughts are, if you have more, I can read, I don't know, or a lot, but maybe.
That was a few years ago that he had that, so he might not have that, but somebody's gone, well, they're not, they're not, they're not paid anything.
So what do you think, Jay, you wanna kind of, would you contend time for?
Well, I think we'll be, we won't be able to have a conference, so, if we could get a, I mean, I could get around.
That okay with you guys?
Yeah, that's, anything you guys could do, that's, that's good with that.
Let's start with that, just rest of what you come up with.
Sure.
Uh huh, I'm on it, yep.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, thanks guys. See you later. Don't wanna give any more thought.
He's like, bye.
I got a seat for you, Dave.
What's that?
I got a seat for you.
Hey Paul. Yes, so it's been a, it's been a couple months since we stood before you guys and we're asking for permission to submit for a grant, um, to go ahead and, and some way to fund more defense. Um, so, the reason why we're here today is, um, we're not gonna ask for any funds until Levi gets back, but basically, I think you guys have progress, and we'll see what we can get, um, some sort of approval, uh, to move forward. Um, I have the lease that was signed here, uh, December sixth of twenty twenty-two, between BNSF and between the city, and, uh, pretty much it stipulates that the, it has to be a minimum of six feet high, and we're gonna have the posts, um, they're gonna be five foot sections, um, and it's gonna run, run, again, it's gonna run the sidewalk all the way until First Avenue, which is around about three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and thirty feet, uh, of fence. So that's gonna be, um, the material that we are striving for, is gonna be that, uh, solid composite, two by eight, uh, two by six, I mean, two by six, uh, composite board, um, that would then go up until First Avenue, and then after First Avenue, because on the map here, it says that there's gonna be a break, in case emergency services needed to access BNSF, uh, railroad. Um, and so after that break, after First Avenue, is when you do, uh, it would still have to be six foot high, or it would be, um, somewhat of a, uh, a cheaper material, um, for, that's what we kind of perceived, we're parking for an access point, or, uh, snowed off, and then we, uh, winter time, we would do that. Um, so, we did meet with, uh, Amy McBeth, um, on Friday, when I say we, it was Jim, Alyssa, myself, Paul, uh, we all met with Amy McBeth. Um, she is the general director of public affairs for the BNSF, pretty much from here, stretching down to Texas, and going to the east, if you catch that. So, for sure, from here down to Texas, and there's several other public affairs individuals that work from here to there, but they all report to her, so she's pretty much a much larger cog in, in a system, which is still one of the, uh, higher affairs. We ran through, it was about a two hour meeting, an hour and a half, discussing our vision for what we wanna do with the park, um, we discussed, uh, the lease agreement as well. Um, basically, what the conclusion was, was she cannot help us with the fence, in terms of funding, um, as it states here, that the city agreed to put the fence in, um, we were supposed to be having, or when I say we, the city was supposed to have the fence done two hundred and seventy days from the time that this date, uh, from when it was signed. Um, and in which case, if it's not done, BNSF and that go in, and they could put the fence in themselves, and it would still get built from the city. Um, that being said, Jim asked what that fence would be there to put in, she said, probably would be the cheapest under the fence, that, that can be done, um, in order to save money, but it would still be built from the city. Um, we rebuttal basically saying, uh, we're trying to raise the funds, do it right the first time, make it look nice, cause it is a representation of everybody that's driving from twenty-nine to eighty-one, or vice versa, uh, it is a representation of the, so I think if we put in the cheapest fence, it's, it's, what, uh, Hillborough basically calls it, or, it's, it's, and so we, uh, stayed downtown, uh, hopefully, we want to see the cheapest option. Um, year to date, uh, oh, back, so, since she cannot, um, or BNSF cannot fund the agreement for the fence, um, she has put forth, saying that she's gonna do a letter of support, this letter of support's gonna help us with, uh, hopefully, uh, showing other grants that we're really applying for, that we do have the map with the BNSF, that she does see our mission, um, including there, and everything that BNSF has, has pretty much done for the park, um, in time hours, and the other additional funding that they have put in to give us the money. Basically showing that they are on board, and hopefully whoever else that we're asking for, for other favors of the park, uh, can get on board too. Uh, she also said, since we are past that two hundred and seventy-eight point, um, to complete the fence, she's gonna talk to the, the other individual from BNSF that signed the, uh, lease agreement. Was it?
Yeah.
The lease signed in, or? Uh, December sixth, December, December sixth of twenty twenty-two, and it's supposed to be two hundred and seventy-three, twelve things. Uh, but she is asking for a, a year extension, um, we, we're gonna try to follow up on that, see what's up with that, um, she's gonna ask for a year extension, basically updating the other end of, of the person that signed this, the lease, saying we didn't do anything before, but we are in progress now. Uh, progress being, is right now, we have, uh, we just had another donation from Moose River Bank, uh, so we're at seventy-six hundred dollars donated, uh, which then allows us to get that five thousand dollar grant, so right now, we're at twelve thousand so far, and it's still rolling. Uh, that doesn't include any of the funds that we acquired from, uh, the giveaway, um, where people can, uh, purchase a ticket, and then there's a chance to, um, receive either a fire pit or grill, so if we sell all of those tickets, we could potentially raise another three or four thousand. Uh, but that being said, is, um, we are looking for, or looking to move forward and starting to lay in the posts. The posts have already been purchased from the education committee, uh, they've already purchased the cedar posts, uh, the treated cedar posts, and the, um, the two different, uh, posts, so the, the rest of the fence hasn't been, uh, purchased yet, and that's where we're still acquiring funds, or depending on what material it is. So. Um, do you have those numbers, I would not have that.
We never done.
Okay.
I was, I knew that. I'm sure Levi's got, there.
And I heard secondhand, um, I didn't seem to like sense, but I heard secondhand that those funds from other projects that those funds were allocated for, uh, that they ended up saving on, so they utilize those funds in order to produce the posts. So, the seven, or the, um, twelve hundred, yeah, twelve thousand, six hundred is still on.
Anybody have any questions? So what did you ask, Paul?
Uh, ask is, and unfortunately, uh, Levi's not here, and I didn't wanna bother him, I'm on account, um, I'm on vacation, and I'm on dog, um, but, uh, he has a big portion of the schematic in his computer, um, basically laying out two specs of the park, including the fence. Uh, again, six feet high minimum, five feet average, we post with three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and thirty feet, stretching from the sidewalk to First Avenue southwest, just north. Uh, basically, if we can, if we can get you those specs, once Levi gets back, and we can go ahead and get approval now, for start digging, uh, obviously, we'll have a hard one with it, but to start digging said post holes, we can start setting holes. But in that way, that we move forward with the fence, and not have to wait enough.
You coming?
What, what's, what's, we got, uh, public park, western railroad, you're, you're.
Um, so, it is fifty feet, again, um, in here as well, it's fifty feet from the center of the main track, uh, which there is lines that are marked out there, um, I believe it was sixty-three feet from the curb to where those white lines were, uh, which I thought it was a lot less, I thought it was fifty feet wide, and it's actually sixty.
Well, it will come down, this end here will come.
Perfect. This, this end will come, um, that, I'm not sure, because it doesn't say that there's specifications that it needs to, uh, it just says that it needs to go up until, but it also states in here that they still need access to the land that we're leasing from them, in case of there's some sort of, it's all.
The, the, uh, some, you wish to go on, right?
Um, yeah, things like, or cities like Mandan, um, yeah, there, there's a lot of things going there, they have that kind of money, that, for, they're employing, they're, they're, they're continuing to, they must have some form of access, or anything. It does, it does state in here that if there are any sort of, uh, locked areas, these buildings, that we need to provide that with a key, or access that takes them. And then again, uh, just because we, if we will, if we read well, uh, we still would then have to write a written proposal, um, showing all the specs to BNSF, that still get, uh, uh, our approval for our written submission from that.
Wouldn't it be, that, were you able to get that approval?
Correct, right, but if I, if we get approval from you guys first, we can. Correct, right, but if I, if we get approval from you guys first, we can, before we can give a dig still, we're going to also get approval. Basically, the, the point of tonight is if, if we can try to get the park to go forward and get approval from you guys. When Levi gets back, we submit those specs to BNSF, the respect the parties are giving, and then get approval for that. And then we start digging that way. Versus wait till Levi gets back and then we need to wait till next month. Because the way that we see it, time is a little bit of, of the essence. Yeah, it's like December to utilize the, the grant. The, if we don't utilize the grant and we don't meet the deadline of what we're trying to do, we can't resubmit for the Trail County grant next month. But if we do meet this deadline, we can reapply for other favors through Trail County for this grant. But yes, it's just five thousand, but at this point, we can try to acquire any fund where we can. The goal is to try to alleviate a lot of clients, like city, uh, kind of thing. So we had a meeting.
Back then, you're gonna come after money down the road?
It does say that the city was, was to build the fence. He would, I'm not sure if you read the paper, but we're seeking to acquire funds from H E C in order to make this happen as well as any additional funding was to be used for like the thirty percent down for the matching parts of other brands that we were going to be applying for. But somebody much more knowledgeable, pretty much drawn to like that, we should probably break that, break that aside. We have some private funding, we can get into H E C, we can get some from Trail County, we can get some from the city. Get some in smaller leases, there won't, there won't be one party carrying for it. And then we can go forward and then from there, get all additional funding from private grants, state grants, federal grants.
I think. Why are there, was it H E C more than they're waiting for the tolls and damage and the?
That was one of, one of the things and one of the things was ice buildup against the fence and that's why it states in here that there's that fifty, that fifty foot movement. Because the train, or the, the speed at which the train is supposed to be traveling, still going off of a train going that, that speed that's required is hurting. So I believe that's why there is that movement to prevent damage or things coming from the federal grants. So that, that's just why I did not agree with them, I don't know if that's, that's.
Hey, that's, I guess to me, that's my biggest concern is what the fence is cost on the road, it's really costly. Still not comfortable that we're gonna find a material that's not really very possible.
See, they didn't have to be close, they're just have to show close that right there. But it was pushed through there.
Not so much where you're.
How many of the rocks?
And that, I think this, this.
That would be more considerable, hopefully.
Uh, with the tubing, there is gonna be spacing underneath, so there's, there's a little bit of gap. So the board is gonna be, um, to allow those to be planted.
This is, do you have one that you think is possible? It is actually a positive one. I don't think, I don't think it's actually quite possible, um, it's worth getting. If you can deal with rocks, probably.
And. And also too, I mean, we can always see how the first year goes. If we do see that there is some sort of damage occurring, the, the material is removable, so we can potentially move it there in the winter time or, or whatnot and add storage. But I mean, when we have the farmers market out there, we haven't had any rocks taken down. Probably not have to take stone, but otherwise, there's been no rocks being picked out. Where would it work?
I don't think, I don't think we even want to talk about that. If it can't, we're not, we gotta take it off, we're gonna have to fix it.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I get that from Levi. We have to take out, we'll have to put all the money that's spent at work, so it's wasted. Extremely expensive to keep up, it's definitely a political cost. But that's my concern, I don't want the city to get tied into where we have, obviously, we have another money to, uh, we're always worried about.
Any questions at all?
I have none.
No question?
This is how I see it, you have the education meeting on Monday, but I'd like to see the, the pictures, prices, quotes of what it's been upon. And, and address some of these concerns about the rocks, you really talk to that company, which goes, probably the ones you guys need to reach for. And I'd also like, we certainly have to put up some special fence. What, what, what would be the cost of us to put up the chain link fence? After, so it's basically, we kind of go back to what a little bit I've been planning on, but we have to put up some kind of a fence, fence correct, killer, at some point? So if we put up the cheapest under the fence, it would be probably a change in the fence. So what's that gonna cost us, the city, you know, what's there, it's gonna cost us thirty dollars, you know? This is gonna cost you fifty dollars, you know, the city should be able to cover some of that cost, but we have to really start. And then, so, but I'd like to see more of a written down cost estimate of what you're, what you're looking at doing. And then from that point, we will be meeting in two weeks, we don't need one day. So then at that point, we can.
You have another question?
That's, I'm glad to see permission. You, that way, that way, we'll be able to run across all your, all your education people in one day and I think you had a ref. Economic Development is gonna get that deal also, so you can have that discussion and kind of finalize plans and get a consensus from your group, and then, then maybe come back, me or myself or Levi making that, maybe this could be kind of that. And then you guys go inside, but if you want to move forward with that, that fence, if you want whatever.
I mean, but again, you've also been on the beach, and you've seen all the places that you've come forward with. I don't have those, Levi has those.
What I'm saying is you have, you'll have, you'll be able to, after the education meeting, you'll have all this stuff. Right. What price, you'll have all blocking, okay, what if we put up, if we put a chain link fence, the outrun one, you put up a black one, what if there's something to cost? Sure things, I think we should, we should have this, we should make a discussion on what, what rock they would like to go. Especially, they're gonna be quite funding through it.
I mean, and it just goes back to going back to the initial argument, what's gonna be our most, the least maintenance? And that's what was settled on was the composite, and that was because of the, the composite. And that was for twenty-five plus maintenance free, probably all the floors. And I mean, to be honest, I, I would raise not to do, I would say work direct twice. If you're gonna do something right, you, you do it right the first time. And I just see that also as, as a waste of time and money if we do put in a chain of fence and then have to rip it out later to put in other materials. So I just feel like that's gonna be a waste of time, a waste of money if we do the same work twice. So that's why we, we have been for the past eight Mondays now, trying to brainstorm what is going to be the best route and as far as I was concerned, or as far as my understanding, and again, I wouldn't have the last presentation when it was decided that it was gonna be the, the composite. And that was again, because twenty-five a year plus maintenance free. It's, it slides in and out because if there is a damage board, we can easily just slide out the boards, replace it with another board, or if it's graffiti, we can slide it out, replace it, and there's no arms. But if it's a chain of fence, and that's what's decided, I have to pull my name off of it because I just don't feel it's, it's something that's conducive from what downtown is. Since H E C's meeting last Monday, again, this, this what helped there to me, taking buildings. And I just think that we need to do something to enhance the visual appeal. And I don't think, I know it might be cost conducive, but then having to redo it later, who's gonna redo it? We're gonna have to go through all the same groups again, so if we do it right the first time, we have the whole team now, we have the people that have to drive now. But if we have to do it again?
I'm not saying I'm against it, but.
Correct.
But, but what, but what I'm saying is, I'll say two things. One, I think we should have the city have the right to see this price.
Correct, yes.
Two, I don't think that park right there is gonna determine whether or not businesses come downtown. I don't think that park is gonna have that much credit on that. I haven't heard too many businesses come up to me and tell me, if that fence doesn't go there, I would never ever think we would do this. Like, how many businesses are here?
And, and that also goes to, Nicole, you have a business on the street, would that fence deter the mother, have you even had that business name?
No, just because we don't have the right marketing in place to drive traffic downtown.
I think there's a lot of other avenues that we should research, others trying to get. I don't, and no disrespect, I don't think that we should play the fence out, and that's what's gonna bring that market into this downtown. I think we need others, look at other avenues that probably will build us downtown and get better.
And it's, it's not just the fence stays here, that the board would do anything else for that park before, actually, before anybody even used that one. So it's no more downtown car shows, there's like, it's all in, that in order for a community that's gonna happen, there is.
I think to Paul's point, what he's saying is regardless of the fence, if they're putting on, you know, the marketplace and utilizing downtown street, that is what drives traffic downtown to Cedar Street. Um, we don't have a lot of businesses unfortunately open on there, but I think what you're saying is if you can drive the traffic down there, maybe some people would want to perchance go into one of those main street businesses too. So I, I can see it both ways.
It's not just, you know, it starts with that, is basically what this all comes to. Fence needs to happen regardless, but in order for the rest of the improvements to happen, to set part, to happen during these city events.
But also, prior to upbringing of the Burmington, this contract, you said return in twenty twenty-two, it never made a statement, it came down, it stayed down.
I didn't even know we did that.
And, and that's something that.
I think you kind of brought that up again, you were told.
And that's something that she had contested is that sometimes some of these things do fall off the radar, but if, if whoever is in charge of that comes across that again, then they basically saw this as a liability contract and they would either do a callback at there or they would again, put up the fence themselves and then do up those specs, and then they still do the same.
I guess, I, I think I agree with Paul, I think we see what our options are and let that go. If the link contract, I mean, I don't.
Oh. A little different layout.
Here.
So a different situation. But I think to move forward, you guys are exactly wrong, I think the education Monday, I think Levi will be there, I'm reading the message already, because I know that Economic Development had questions. I think between Levi and me, I think we can bring up where our concerns are here, just based on what you guys have tonight, and I agree with your terms. I do also lean more towards, to me, it's about, it's about making this area look, whether it brings me to town or not, I don't care. It's voice to me, but to me, it's how much, and that's what, and that's me, it's about education, I think that if it brings business to town, great, but it's going, it's clean, and it looks nice, so I think that's where I would, I think you guys, I would leave it. And then at that point, Levi, me, Paul, whatever, can go back to next mission meeting and we will have more facts on prices. For sure, prices, written down prices, and what it is, compared to prices, like, you know, we have to be doing things that we do. It definitely helps you as far as this cost, you're not getting fifty thousand dollars for this composite fence, and you got the behavior. It seems, it's gonna, it's gonna cost you forty thousand dollars for a chain link fence up there, you've already got a twelve thousand dollar trade, you know, plus you're just in the beginning, so you just, you know, we, and between Economic Development, maybe we can make a composite fence work. Once we have all these numbers, we may decide what's best, maybe, I think you have a few questions about, about durability, the rocks and everything. If you ask the company that makes the board to say, this is where we're getting questions from, you know, about what's your thoughts on it? And then maybe say.
Paul, what's, last time you were in grad season, what do you think your wife and her son, or somebody, you know, have some type of a fence over there?
Yeah, so.
You guys never talked to them?
Yep, so that was, that was actually, she has an email, but that was actually one of the things that he said is that they have, they have pressure treated lumber, they said that it is a nightmare because they have to stain it constantly. Uh, they have to replace the wooden boards constantly. They said if it was up to them, and I'll get you a free email, but it said if it was up to that, they were gonna, it doesn't fit in a long.
Like Paul said, I, I think that would be a good question for the company that makes this work, that grew on that line. Maybe, maybe they've done, you know, stuff like that next to the railroad and it's, they can say, for a fact that it's still up. Like you said, it's concerns that I have, and people want to get into it, people want to get.
No, why?
I guess my question would be, yeah, if I, if I compromise lumber, is it gonna drive or something? I don't see it getting possibly, but if that, uh, compromised, it could be a lot of design. I don't know, but it is a second point, and I agree, if water starts to be impervious, then it starts to.
Composite.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a solid composite, it's not like the dead material that has like those, those holes that run through it. It's completely solid all the way through, so it's, that material is, it's the same color, it's pretty good. It's like old, yeah, but it's very, very durable.
The stairs to our house are composite and so it's very, very durable, very durable. The only thing is when it rains, it's slick, but that's gonna be an upward, not a, you know what I mean, so. Exactly, so.
I'm sprinkler on it.
Right.
Honestly, Paul, I, I think if you, like, since that's what Paul talked, I think that's gonna answer a lot of questions, and I make all these committees come around. And maybe, maybe even actually up in the end, he's up the front.
Right, and again, Levi wasn't here, and I respect him, he's on vacation, I'm not gonna sit there and watch. So since he wasn't here, we don't have the stuff right in front of you, I'm just trying to get ahead of it. So in that way, we can have, had the initial approval, but again, like Paul was saying, we have somebody from, that was just voted in, in H E C. Uh, she's from Christensen Group over in Fargo and has a lot of, uh, construction experience. And I, I just work over at the tablet and I see the way it's like, well, absolutely like architectural piece. To put it like they, what, yeah, so she, and she, if we can get her on board, she, she can help us with some of the, the final touches and things. I think she's a great. Yeah, we do already have, uh, the gen, the general director of public affairs, she's on the ground with us. She sees our vision.
These rents are zero dollars, I guess. Which I'm pretty specific percent share.
I have a question.
Is for ninety-nine years or twenty years, it's been ninety-nine years they have it there. But if there's a special assessment, let us read it. Then actually.
Thanks.
Gotcha. Thanks, Paul.
So, and go ahead with, uh, same question, we've worked, uh, with, uh...
Um, here's off the side, the other news that we had today, it started today, so, uh, at some point, we get, we get stuff, and I would like to, you know, do a lot of new news here.
We all got, we all know.
Yep, so that's why I usually try to get, I'll feature the new options. Um, cemetery, uh, decent there, working on, a couple of dead trees in there, getting a vote, to see what that's gonna cost, and then, I think, call the couple others, have ones that, depending on price and stuff, the guy who's just pulling up here, before tonight, to talk about it, but probably next week. See what the numbers are, and see what he wants to do, on what goes ahead.
That's dumb. And so, uh, you just said, the, uh, the guy from, uh, it goes, you, correct? Uh, come and look at that periodization, once I got it turned on, the number of leaks that they could only count was eight. There's probably more, and it's a big, well, periodization, there's pretty good value of it.
Supposed to report back to them that they have been corrected, or can we have an extension? I don't. Well, he might, and that's, that's why I need to, to touch base with Zach on it. Um, like I said, I got it this afternoon, so I just kind of perused through it.
And then if I happen to be aware of it, you know, some people ask that.
Yeah, it has, um, it, it's been a while, um, but Zach had asked about this. He said it was pretty important, so we, we went ahead and did it. Um, cause he, he knew it had been a while. So it's some pretty cool information in there. Um, but yeah, their, their timeline of fixing it was, in my opinion, rather short for a report coming out when it did.
And, and we need to, uh, record in the mail today.
Exactly.
You will.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's, I, it, you know, it's out of our hands when it comes past the, the due date of when it was done, so. Um, but I'll, I'll check with Zach and maybe I'll have a report on exactly what is it that we do need to do? Like as far as like fencing or things like that, or, um, if some of these are minor repairs we have to do.
Potential addition out there.
Mm-hmm.
We can kind of coordinate at that point if necessary.
Right. Yeah, and I don't know how that's gonna affect that extension piece too, as far as like the fence is concerned, like, you know?
The fence here, they may add on to it.
Mm-hmm. But like this one here, um, storage facility is in need of sandblasting and painting, so that's, that's obviously gonna cost some, some money there, and that timeline is ninety days. So it looks like we're probably gonna have to utilize some dollars to come in compliance, basically. Ask Zach on it, see what we need to do. Um, but otherwise, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on, uh, my side on the microphone, uh, I know that Casey is currently kind of trying to work on finding, I think, some type of funding for JY, for the, uh, micro, uh, and then the DDR is also working on the big sheets, so hopefully when they have the final basis on the funding side of it, I think you go ahead and get that hoping for this winter, but it's not the scale that you were getting on. Casey, more than that, right, as far as financing?
We, uh, we're looking to, uh, maybe for the area project, so just to put an option. So if that, you know, if that familiar program's up there, it's all.
We're just kind of finding whatever best option is for that to move forward with, now that it's been approved in the direction of doing it. You should have that. I was out at this mark last week, actually, we did not give a grant, you may have heard that, by four. It was, uh, maybe seven or eight by four. Looking at, looking at people that have applied for what you were doing, uh, were probably, were going, we were a long shot, but that's just my novice opinion of looking at what those other entities were doing. Economic development, they had everything last week, they had, they got a new member on their board now, Sarah Reimers, Reimers. And, uh, like Paula mentioned, her background is in construction, so we, 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 it's a good asset to that, uh, bring in a bit more information. And so they nominated it and voted her through. She's not shy, like you. She's, she's willing to speak, you know, if she has a problem or something or a concern, you know, from the first meeting, she's, I think she should get, kind of hit the drum running and, uh, afraid to ask some questions, so hopefully she will be a, a good, a good source for economic development and keeping that a balance, you know? Not everybody is a yes person, nor is she a question. Uh, a lot of conversations were made there about, about expensive projects, and they asked some questions, and what we had. So hopefully those questions have been answered, or maybe next, uh, of course, verification is next money, and I'm, we're having a lot of such concerns here, you know, but. My hope is, is that we, uh, is that we come up with a, an actual plan, you know? What, what, what's it gonna look like, what are we gonna do, fencing options, whether, whether our options are, what they wanna do, and I, 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 I am a huge in economic development, but I do, do, Casey would agree that, you know, not, that's not gonna hurt, sort of there. And I don't think it's gonna be the end all, but I know, my, I know that we should put something that's attractive there, that, that, that nice, and it's gonna help. So, uh, but I, but I do have, like everybody else, we do have more questions, and I think, uh, economic development was a little, uh, a shock there. Sicker, sicker shock? A little what they were asking there, so, but, uh, I, I think, I think, uh, contrary to what they made you, I think, nobody's against them, but they just have more. That's just, that's where I feel, you know, like that, very huge PR comment, that nobody, when I found development really against them, they just have more. Like, okay? And. That's all I have. On, uh.
Did anybody get any of those questions?
No, even you know. Just a hold there, unless it's in me or somebody else. But, uh, okay, uh, so the officers, um, everything big, I mean, everything worked okay today, or is the water desk you are?
It was a challenge.
Challenge.
We had a discharge today, or, we had a paper.
Zach?
We had a discharge, of course, of, of, we had a paper.
Not much to do, it's not the first time, and it won't be the last time. So unless you wanna add a few more root stations?
Well. Well, we know, we know very well, we, but, you know, we, we, we're pretty sure that's the main reason. Cause I know some people are like, yeah, but. That was definitely a lot of your advice.
Like I said, my main gate's at four inches, and it was, I thought it was empty. The water standing around, I, it would not bend that height between. And I, I heard that South and Lock was coming down, we heard a couple people, and said they, they barely keep the rain off of that. Were you on it that night?
Yep. Was that the Ford truck underneath the oak pass? Yes, he hydroplaned his back end, it was totally crushed, and it spun him around and broke us from that, so. Yep.
I haven't heard, you, you really think the water needs what you basically said?
Yeah, there was a few.
There were a few?
Probably have a margin.
But were they thinking that on a normal rate, it didn't, it already had it in the past?
A lot of, um, a couple of them were, are also was evaporated, they're back there, they're, um, we've checked their grade, water tap.
I don't know how fast, well, I don't know how great, but I noticed, the water there is, I saw, I was surprised how fast it did, it did go down. Zach kind of gave some, like, hitters past and some of that stuff. Kind of interesting listening to that, so, but, so I learned something there, so.
It'd be good if we only created.
You know, but this is just an example of, you know, when we talk about, about the drainage, you know, this was over, I don't know, three, four hours, I don't know. I just imagine if you had that in two of them, so, but, you can't obviously be ready for everything, otherwise you have some major oversights and, you know, but it just, it does kind of emphasize to me a little bit for the public, that they have to be aware too, that, you know, they're, they have to be aware a little bit of what's going on in their basements and things like that, too. They're trying to move waters and fast, so they have, unless they wanna spend money, they're gonna be dollars out here, and, but, uh. Remember, comments from today, drainage is better. One good, good name?
That's right.
JR?
Nothing for me.
Yep.
Uh, Levi wanted me to report.
There it is.
Thank you.
Abby, uh, DA two S is willing to help the city right close to Grant, who I was talking about with the previous meeting, so we could go there. Um, and then the rest of the items, I did, um, send a JR in, so, I figured that was a little more efficient.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you.
Just so you thought you were.
Um, the only thing that, um, I didn't get to talk to Nicole about, um, we do need to sit down and, um, with JR, this is on yours, to do this with JR, the central rural water, uh, contract.
Yep.
So the five of us, uh, the three of us plus Zach, and you guys should kind of, eight of you sit down and look at it and get it finalized, so. Um, so yeah, so keep Levi shortly. Um, mine, we ordered the new tent today for the tent replacement, um, just the wires are bad, and we got insurance money to pay for the entire thing, so that was good. Um, other than that, finalizing some other things, and keeping the, the family chat, so, that's the only thing I have to. And then we, we got it to leave for us this week, so I'm leaving tomorrow. Anything for me to use with that? Okay, I want to, yep. Next.
Uh, you, you're, uh, I'm not, yeah. And how's the man here? Uh, new business, uh, preliminary budget on the.
Sure. What I'm looking for from you guys tonight is the items in blue. The items, who are your levy funds? Um, these are the, the main funds that we talked about, the other ones, um, before, the kitchen chambers. Um, these numbers are based off of the twenty twenty four levy numbers, plus this is not. Um, so anything else, I'm not looking for the stuff tonight, this is the main thing that was, that was the best. Everything else is, like, able to be flexible from here into the year for the stuff. Um, this is just kind of what we need to have, so I'm ready to roll for, uh, for residents and citizens to come into. So, my main question is, do you want me to keep the numbers right where they're at for these levy funds? Keep a three percent increase, or do you want me to back off?
Uh, I'm, 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 I'm. You want me to write out that?
I, I have a motion here tonight, just on the levy fund.
Um, just on the levy fund, you can, you have a motion, probably. Move that. Preliminary budget, and a second. Down seconds, any discussion?
This is where we approve the preliminary, and then after, we can always go down right now.
You can, yep, and then, uh.
So I understand, I'm not again.
Yep, yep, you nailed it. Um, and let's say if you, if the commission did want to reduce it from three down to whatever, to one zero, um, you can bank both percentages for next year, but, up to a five percent increase. Then that extra one percent was going to the, to the.
Is that new?
That is new legislation.
That's part of that new legislation, okay.
Right, yep, so it's, it's a three percent cap, um, and.
But you can bank.
Yep, yep, you can bank up to, you can bank up to six percent each year, but you can only increase your budget five percent with, with that flexibility, so.
Okay.
Need more discussion? Want any questions? Is that Jason? Yes. Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
You have your question.
You have it. Not on the.
Uh, we will do a discussion, dedication, dedication of tax maybe?
Yes, um, for your guidance city ordinances, I am to provide you with what your debt is, um, for the, um, for the current year going forward. Um, I did not put twenty twenty five here, I didn't touch that till after I spent the dollars, but you do have twenty six through twenty seven. Um, your payments for these homes are about the same in twenty twenty five as they are in twenty twenty six, not a lot of difference. Um, but this is where you're sitting, as far as your debt. Um, you've got two thousand nine water tower, twenty twelve water treatment, twenty twelve, uh, king and sewer, uh, two silver bank loan, that one, that's already the birthday for, we're paying that off, uh, in January, probably this. And set the payment for, um, public works equipment, whatever. Um, the buy down account, um, as, you know, the sales tax, and then with a lock, we collect special assessments for that. Um, yeah, that's, that's what we're looking at. Um, right now, uh, Bank North Dakota, that paid out of water fees, uh, same, or, uh, Bank North Dakota for the water tower and water treatment, that paid out of water fees. Um, and this would be one of the big reasons why we had to do that water rate extension earlier with, um, Midwest assistance. Um, Varian, the king of sewer, this is supposed to be paid with a special assessment. Um, this, this is in a discussion in the past, um, with the properties over on West End. Um, so yeah, this will be coming due in twenty twenty eight. Um, balloon payment for this one, uh, sale taxes, the buy down, um, then with a lock, special assessment, so.
Maybe there's a lot, especially testing, but, you, you start in twenty twenty six, I think there's more.
Uh, I think there's an answer. Um, please, I didn't see, was it this last year? That was the only one that I had. Okay.
Somebody else maybe, I think, can show.
Yeah, I know the, yeah, you're, I mean, you are right, there's no default, I just put on the taxes, like, when I was in last year. Yeah, um, as of the end of, oh, okay. Uh, as of the end of July, you guys have, uh, four hundred thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and fifty seven cents in your debt retirement fund. Um, I sent out the priorities, you use these dollars in your email, and I can pull it up then. Uh, and so.
Do I ask a question? And, and you might not know this until later, but on our accounts payable, I've got the, the bond series of the twenty twelve and two thousand nine. And I saw the fifty five thousand on one of the bills, but the other one was a hundred and twenty thousand.
On water.
On that twenty twelve one, yeah.
We did have, um, uh, interest paid out in either March or May.
So it credits that, or?
It, yeah, this is, the way that this spreadsheet was set up here as well was, they, it's under included, it's been on this one, so, I can look it up.
Well, just, just to bring it up, just in case, like, these numbers are smaller or, you know, different, just because I noticed that tonight on the accounts payable. But the, I've got a hundred and eighty five thousand, but if you add those two, that's two hundred and twenty thousand, so, I mean, you pay less, so it's great.
On the twenty twelve one, you said?
Yeah, so the twenty twelve, um, assigned tonight was a hundred and twenty thousand, so that's a fourteen thousand dollar difference.
Okay, well, we'll check what the interest in that was earlier, though, here.
Um, it's, it can be lower, it's great. Just interesting.
Okay, I have that written down, we'll check into that. That would be my guess, so.
That's the interest.
But yeah, um, so yeah, so you guys can use dollars to pay up any of these areas. Um, right now, I think we're spending time, but if you guys, if you want to, but not, maybe with your debt retirement. Um, your first priority with your debt retirement, always, that's four hundred and two thousand four sixteen. Um, priority number one is repayment of any debt that is causing a deficiency, no levy, or within next year is likely to cause a deficiency for the way. Um, emergency cemetery, airport, and rectify examples of deficiencies in levying this year, and what I mean by that is, all of your levies have an access to them as far as your notes, um, one of them is two point five mil, four mil, direct, it's six mil. Well, because of this three percent cap, based off of the dollars levied in twenty twenty four, you guys aren't able to, you are able to levy to that whole amount of notes if you want to, be flexible, both of your general funds, um, dollars over into those others, you know, does that make sense? So, I should, I shouldn't have taken out, uh, I shouldn't have gotten rid of my budget. Any other things? Here we go, so. Okay, so the cemetery can levy two mil back to them, okay? Based on only doing a three percent increase on the dollars back in twenty four, we're only levying one point six nine mil, we took it back. So, the value of a mil, the value of a mil over really isn't super important anymore. It is for people, it is like the maximum, but with three percent, it, it's not as much growth as you would see if you were just to say, yep, I want it to, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, you know, if you, if the commission was to see a deficiency in any levy fund, priority one is to kill it, the deficiency, am I reading that right, JR?
Mm-hmm.
So if you guys wanted to max it out and go up to two mil, you know, put a little extra in from your debt retirement funds, just to boost these levy funds, you can, if you see this, you can do that. Um, your second priority, uh, the repayment of any debt that has resulted in a utility rate increase, or will result in a utility rate increase. Um, right now, we're only proposing to increase the needle, um, that's after doing the math, um, a dollar fifty, we're gonna cut it, it's gonna take a while. Um, same, you know, to judge your electric fund, but that's probably about ten, if you guys wanna, extra dollars over into that, you know, we can work on that. Um, as of right now, water and sewer, I thought, well, it's fine, first, for the. Um. Third priority.
Yay, it took a couple of years, but yay!
Uh, third priority, any debt that is financed by special assessment, giving a first priority to a citywide assessment. You guys don't have any citywide assessments right now, they're all, uh, the, the, they're all outside there. Um, fourth priority, any capital project that surpasses the required amount for bidding as set by the authority. Um, and the fifth priority, capital projects for city buildings and infrastructure in amounts less than those projects for which bidding is required by the authority. So, there's many projects that need to be done to the infrastructure, or building, we can pull.
My question. Um, the debt retirement fund, that can be paid to these things here, um, does it have to be paid, or can it still continue to collect? Like, is it one of those where you have to use all the funds by a certain time, or it can continue to build?
My interpretation is you don't have to spend it, it's there to use what the guidelines describe.
As long as we do, okay.
Yep, as long as you follow your priorities.
Okay.
Me, that's kind of one of it, that we, we must, that cushion for us. So you have a roof, maybe roof, but I wanna go there, and then the major costs, if they come up, to me, it's something to do that. Where those things are, depending on, you know, the burden to, 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 to. To me, it's, okay, what point do you not, you, what about, you have it all, you, um, where, where do we come? And I think right now, I'm probably, we're, we're.
And, and I ask that question because we don't have cash reserves, so it is definitely a good thing for those types of emergencies, if maybe.
Yeah, that's what I have on debt retirement, so, um, and discussion of, uh, dedication tax, so, any other questions?
Oh, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I can see outstanding utility bill, discussing property tax, we don't want to have a wish, you're doing the rest correct?
Mm-hmm.
You just, you want to, you, uh, sell them to the public, I, or, or?
Uh, you know, it's emotionally great, um, I thought we would be kind and send a letter in August with a deadline of your, you know, either October fifteenth or your second meeting in October, um, just to get people kind of time to, to, to. or your second meeting in October, um, just to give people some time to do things.
Well, JR, what do you think?
I would suggest that we have a motion, we'll send letters now, and if they don't pay by, whatever, have mine you said, and we'll just be specially assessed. So, we.
Do you think the motions, who, uh, who send all letters that are not paid by, is kind of what they can do?
I had suggested October fifteenth, we need emails, um, because they're due to the colony, no later than.
That sounds good.
What if we send out, uh, forty-eight fifty to receive payment, and then obviously, when you want to the tax rule, do I have a second?
Second, Phil.
You have four seconds, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Are you done, Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the other one, though.
Okay.
Art? Let's venture, uh, some of that.
Yeah, yeah, she's got separate dates listed on the site info part, looks like it's for the Hillsborough Public Schools, fifty-fifty. I- I'm wondering, is this the fifty-fifty cash prize for some of the games that they have, I wonder? I mean, I don't know if it's a. Yeah.
If they sell tickets, or you're not even drawing, you're getting, instead of coming every month, you decide to go and settle that out, actually?
That's what it looks like.
Instead of coming every month, and having your pool, your gas, and everything?
Yeah, looks like. Seven, which, yeah, I'll second that.
A motion, approved, application, and second.
Yeah, I second it.
Motion second, any more discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? Are you done, John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And the other one. Motion carries. I have an application for heritage insurance. Yeah, you have any concerns, or any?
Nope, it looks like it's complete to me, if you guys have reviewed it, the next step would be, because there is competitors, we have to publish, have to send notice as required, and to the Department of Commerce, and then we can hold a hearing on it. So, just want to make sure you guys are okay with everything as presented, and then we can do that process.
I have one question, though, on the number twenty-five, application for the property tax exemption must be made and granted prior to the commencement of construction.
Or exemption, this is pilot, this is pilot, yeah.
So, it's different then?
Correct, yeah, exemption is different than paying the little taxes, AKA pilot.
So, we just don't have the right documentation?
It's combined in the same statute, which is very interesting, yep. This is pilot, we grant it similar to this for Jordan all event, for Dagleman, and for other ones. But it must be me, I think it'd be great, actually, kind of make all the projects, but there's several.
Do they have to, for this one, then, do they have to be primary sector two, then?
Primary sector is for the exemption.
So, it's different again?
Yep, correct, different again.
Okay, I'm just trying to decipher, like,
Correct, yeah.
When businesses build, where they fall in, whether it's a tax exemption, or a pilot, or a.
Pilot is basically a, it's your animal, you can do with it what you will.
Five years, correct.
That's what they ask for, like, each page, one, that they say that one dollar for five years, twenty-five for one dollar each year, so.
Is that any business that can go, or like, just a certain?
This is any business that can go, well, it's whatever business you guys want to have.
But we've done.
Mm-hmm, yep, yeah, uh, like I said, Dagleman, some things, Jordan all, Matt Construction, it's things before my time. Don't quote me.
Can we just send the letters out?
Yep, as long as you guys are okay with it as presented, so that's the kind of, I don't know if you need to form a motion or anything on it, because we do have to. Those, and then there's a notice for publishing the paper as well, because then it has to be official here, unless you guys have any, basically, it's presented to you guys to make sure the application is completed to your satisfaction, because this becomes a public record, so then you give notice to the editors, the editors have a chance to see this application and say if they want to come, and for or against. If the application is incomplete, well, now they have nothing to come and say against, because they have something they can review.
Do you approve of, I, you know, I need to come? And any motion to approve the pilot application, is there any issue? Is there any motion, do I have a second? None seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Are you done, Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
And the rest for myself. Okay, all business. I already, I want my discussion.
Um, I'll start on this, um, the fire department, um, has requested to lower their loan amount from two point two five million down to four million. Um, if I can find my detail. Um, with that, Kylie recalculated the numbers, and the amount that would be, and the difference in the amounts that they would have to come up with for a hundred and twenty percent coverage, they have to guarantee at least eighty thousand seven sixty-three seventy-seven each year. Um, and this is per Bank of North Dakota rules, our way for extension. Um, what we have asked, um, a few different, we've asked about a few different avenues for, um, having the required additional revenue, we've asked if we could have their Sanford contract be applicable to this amount, that won't work. Um, ambulance revenue, uh, since they were districted, that's not applicable, um, and a couple others.
One is their insurance check.
Yep.
Township payments.
Yep.
And others.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, it's been a little while since I've talked about those. Um, what Scott Wagner suggested, from, uh, Hunter Wagner and Stewart, I believe, is that the city, where they put, uh, their eighty-eight dollars, um, as this required additional revenue, um, and then have a, uh, Scott suggested, like, um, it would probably be in good interest to have a agreement with the fire department, um, to have coverage for, you know, anything that feels that way. So, that's the discussion tonight, um, just looking for direction on what commission might be interested in. As far as eighty dollars, um, we brought in, uh, right around a hundred and seventy thousand last year, that's a month of last year. They are dollars that we plan on to have in our general fund, um, just for the tax relief, to our members. So, they are, they're still, we need to have, you know, any difference to be fair. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's the discussion point, so, what would you say?
Correct, in short, uh, Baker Twitter links, our money, it's guaranteed, whereas the fire department's money is also almost guaranteed, but not by state statute. So, they like our guaranteed money versus their fire department, so we just have to trust the fire department. I have a recourse agreement drawn up, basically a promissory note, if we pay on your behalf, you pay us. And considering that we received some of the general funding, we generally fund the fire department, and I believe that's one of the things that we already handled the money for, we just won't give that to you guys until we make sure we get paid, if I remember correctly, so, because there's.
Then how do they pay if we don't, you know, if they're behind, how do, how do they get paid, and how do they pay us if they can't?
Well, we have, well, I'll, you speak to the numbers, but I know we generally fund them, so many dollars per year in the budget item.
Thirty-nine six.
And another, it was another item that we also paid for that.
Were you insurance?
Yeah, I mean, there's another item that we processed their payment, basically, I can't remember what it was, maybe it was.
Oh, their insurance?
There was, I mean, it was a taxation thing or something like that. It was another in short, though, when they get their fire department, when they get their insurance check, we'll hold on to that for you. And that's, I think it covers that amount, this system, eighty-eight thousand for a fall each year.
So, that eighty-eight thousand is each year?
That's, that's each year, they just need to have it as guaranteed funds coming to make notes to quota, they already have that number at the top of one seventy, or one twenty-five is their sales tax pledge. So, after a number of years, hopefully, sales tax goes up, even when the rate stays the same, we'll have more sales per dollars, this is a fixed amount, this is straight line average price.
We've had so many businesses closing down.
Don't say that.
I'm just being real.
Correct, yep.
Preferably a direction or motion on if you guys would want to, um, dedicate eighty-eight dollars for the very substance.
And that's the general fund, you said it comes out of?
Yep.
Yep, and I'll, I already have an agreement drawn up, these two bills, we, for the time, go ahead and finalize it. Uh, we'll have the fire department on the hook for making sure we get that paid back on any funding source they have, so we can attach to the lease payments from Sanford, or whoever they rent to, to their insurance check, to our own funding, to their own taxes, and we can step in their shoes and make sure we get paid back first.
And as of right now, current sales tax, how is it, uh, for the states?
Well, eighty-eight thousand is the number they have there, it's actually, that includes forty thousand dollars, because the Baker's quarter requires a three percent coverage too. So, the true number that they're short, if you will, is forty thousand, and I believe their insurance check.
They're not insured that much, because they just can't count the lease.
Correct, they can't count the unguaranteed funds.
So, technically, by paper, it works like it, but technically, according to their.
Correct, their insurance check alone covers that amount, if I remember right, but Baker's code is set, well, that's not a state, it's not a state century code fund that they like to attach to, whereas here at the city, because we have these dollars.
It's just basically where the money comes out, and you get paid back, and where it comes from.
Yep.
So, it comes out one way, but you get paid back the other way.
Yep. Yep.
I'll make a motion, I'll have a payment.
Kind of Rob Peter, hey Paul.
Yep. Not that Paul. Not that, Paul.